From 90.9 WBUR, this is a special live edition of Radio Boston. I'm Tiziana Dearing.
And I'm Adriania Walker, columnist for the Boston Globe.
Today, we're broadcasting live from WBUR City Space in a special 90-minute debate between the eight candidates running for four at-large seats on the Boston City Council.
Today's debate is hosted by WBUR, the McCormick Graduate School of Policy and Global Studies at UMass Boston, and the Boston Globe.
We're about to get started with the candidates' opening statements, but first, we want to give you an idea of exactly how today's debate will work. To start, each candidate will have one minute for their opening statement. We'll follow that with questions on four major topic areas: transportation, housing, addiction and policing, and education. At the end of the debate, each candidate will have 30 seconds to make closing remarks.
Tiziana and I will direct our initial questions to one specific candidate. That candidate will then have one minute to respond. As moderators, we will use our discretion in allowing for follow-up discussion. If we decide to follow up on an answer or bring another candidate into the discussion, we will acknowledge them by name, and they will have 30 seconds to respond. Not every question will have a follow-up discussion, and obviously, not every candidate will get to respond to every question.
Listeners, you can hear this debate right here on 90.9 WBUR FM. But if you'd like to see today's discussion, you can also watch a live video stream on YouTube. You can find a link to that feed on the Radio Boston homepage at radioboston.org. Now, let's begin. We have opening statements from the candidates. We pulled names out of a hat to determine the order, and Michelle Wu will go first. You have 60 seconds.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for being here, and thanks for welcoming us. Everything that you need to know about me, you can get from the questions that my two kids ask me most often. So, my four-year-old Blaze wakes up every morning, and the first thing out of his mouth is, "Is it a home day or a school day?" And if we tell him it's a home day, because it's the weekend, immediately after, "What parade are we going to today?" My two-year-old Cass comes with me to City Hall. He's in childcare there. Anytime we drive from Rosendale towards downtown, if we get too far down Washington Street and we're still in the car, he starts frantically asking, "Why are we passing Forest Hill Station?" I'm a mom. I'm a Boston public school parent. I'm a T-Rider every day. I'm a third-term Boston City Councilor, and I'm running for City Council because this moment in our government and politics matters so much. There are big issues facing our country and facing our city that I believe we are uniquely empowered to take care of at the city level, and particularly at the City Council. Over my six years on the Council, I have seen us take big, bold actions and want to ask for community's partnership and continuing to do so.
All right. Thank you very much. Alejandra St. Guillen, opening statement.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. I was born and raised in Mission Hill. My father is an immigrant from Venezuela, my mother a hairdresser from New Hampshire. And even though my father passed away when I was quite young, the values that he instilled in me about living with dignity, about leading with empathy, stayed with me throughout my entire life, my entire career. I started as a public school teacher before I led a statewide civic engagement organization fighting on the front lines for English language learner reform and redistricting. And then the last four and a half years as the Director for Immigrant Advancement, we were fighting for our immigrant brothers and sisters to make sure that they felt protected and welcome in our city. We created the Greater Boston Legal Defense Fund. We created the -- we passed the Trust Act, and also the Language Access Bill. I'm running because this is a critical moment in our city, and the decisions we make now will impact what type of city we want to be in years and generations to come. And those decisions are equity in education, housing, transit, and climate justice. Thank you.
The next opening statement goes to Anissa Asabi George.
Thank you very much, everyone, for being here today. I'm Anissa Asabi George, and very proud to serve as one of your at-large City Councilors. I'm also proud to chair the Council's Committee on Education, as well as chair the Council's Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery. I think today we'll speak about some of those issues in depth. I'm also very proud to be a former Boston public school teacher. I taught for 13 years at East Boston High. My four boys, Douglas, age 15, and my triplets, age 13, Charlie, Kayden, and Samir, are Boston Public School students. The triplets in eighth grade, Douglas a freshman in high school. I'm very proud to be a mom to them and to spend my days working and making sure and advocating for them and their fellow classmates across the district and across our city. I'm also very proud to be a first-generation American. I'm the daughter of an Arab from Tunisia, a Muslim. I'm the daughter of a woman born in a war camp post-World War II. Their stories have influenced me greatly, especially as I approach my work on the City Council. I'm also proud to be a small business owner here in the city of Boston. And owning, operating, and opening and running my small business, The Stitch House in Dorchester Ave, has really led my work on the City Council.
The next opening statement goes to Erin Murphy.
Hi. Thank you for having me. I'm Erin Murphy. I'm a first-time candidate. I'm a mom, teacher, neighbor, friend, born and raised in Dorchester, where I'm raising my children, who my younger two are in college now. And this campaign for me is all about serving and giving back and lifting the voices of people in all of the neighborhoods in Boston. I often tell the story how I grew up in a family where we didn't have much, but I always saw that they cared about giving back and helping others, and that followed me into my adult life. I'm a strong neighborhood advocate. I care about issues that I know we all care about: housing, education. As a 22-year Boston Public School teacher, and my children are Boston Public School students, they were, I get both sides of the parent and the teacher side of the schools. We need to work on making the schools work for everybody and advocate. And also, recovery and mental health is close to me. My family has struggled with that, so it's something we really need to talk about and not be okay about the stigma associated with it. So, I -- thank you.
Our next statement will be from Julia Mejia.
One of the yeses. Don't worry, I can translate for myself. In fact, I've been translating my entire life. I started in my life of advocacy at the age of nine, when I became the official translator for my mom, who was undocumented for a period of time in the entire neighborhood. So, at an early age, I started fighting for services. I was that one kid that everybody brought with them to the welfare office, the doctor's office, because they knew if they brought me along, they were going to get what they were looking for. And since then, I've been fighting. I'm the first in my family to graduate high school, college, was able to buy a house and get my mom out of Section 8. And it is my lived experience and my 25 years of experience as a community organizer, working to ensure that the voices of those who are most impacted not only have a seat at the table, but that we're working in collaboration with elected officials to ensure that our needs are front and center. I founded a nonprofit organization called C-Plan, as well as a volunteer-led initiative called Determined Divas. And we were tired of elected officials knocking on our door, asking for their vote, and then we wouldn't see them again. And I'm running because I believe all means all, and nothing about us without us is for us.
Michael Flaherty.
My name is Michael Flaherty, one of your four at-large City Councilors, and this is a great time for our city. I often say we're a resource-rich and a opportunity-rich city. We boast of having the best colleges and universities in the world. We have the best hospitals and network of community health centers, and there's lots of economic opportunity. However, if you cannot afford a place to live in Boston, you don't feel that that opportunity is trickling out into your neighborhood, if your son or daughter didn't get the quality school of their choice, if you don't feel safe in your neighborhood, or you find a needle in your local park, things aren't so great for you. So, we have our fair share of challenges, despite the fact that we are the envy of a lot of cities across the country. As Chair of the Government Operations Committee, it's my experience, my leadership, working with my colleagues on the Boston City Council and our mayor, you know, try to resolve those issues and to try to put our best foot forward as a city. So, I'm looking forward to the discussion and the debate today, and want to be part of the solution, and know that as we continue to move our city forward, we can do so, and we'll only do so if everyone is participating.
Next opening statement goes to Althea Garrison.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Althea Garrison, and I've been on the City Council for about 10 months. I'm running because I believe I'm one of the most qualified candidates that can address the housing issue. So, like, upon being sworn in, I filed an ordinance to bring back rent control. A lot of people probably don't like it, but we have to do something about rent control. There are peoples that are being made homeless every day in this city of Boston, and no one has came to the poll to answer the question, "What are you going to do about rent control? What are you going to do about peoples being forced out of their homes?" And that is what, one thing that I would like to address, if I'm re-elected, is rent control. Thank you.
Thank you. The last opening statement goes to David Halbert.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you for being in the listening audience at home. My name's David Halbert, and I'm also one of the candidates for Boston City Council at large. The role of government has touched my life in so many ways. My mom found herself as a single mom years ago, trying to figure out what she was going to do and how she was going to make her way forward. And it was a government program that allowed us to figure out what that next step was going to be. And for her, it was a life in public service, a life that inspired me to pursue a career in 15 years in public service. And it's because I know the impact of government. I know what it can do, and I know what it must do for those in our city: families that were just like mine, single parents who need a hand up and a way to uplift themselves, children who are just like myself and my sisters, who need Boston Public Schools to be functioning at its highest level, which is why I've called for things like changing the way we have our governance structure. People who need innovation in government, but people who also need honesty in government about the limits that we have in City Council, the limits that we have in city government, and how we work through those obstacles to find creative solutions to the incredible problems that are facing our city at this moment.
That concludes our opening statements. You are listening to a special edition of Radio Boston, live from WBUR City Space. This is a debate between the eight candidates for four at-large City Council seats, sponsored by WBUR and our partners at UMass Boston's McCormick Graduate School of Policy and Global Studies and the Boston Globe. We're broadcasting live on 90.9 WBUR and streaming live video on YouTube. You can find a link to that feed on the Radio Boston homepage, radioboston.org. And now, let's have the debate commence. I want to begin with an issue that is top of mind for many Boston-area residents, that is transportation and mobility in and around the city. So, for the first question, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council found in 2017 that black bus riders in greater Boston spend about 64 hours more on the bus every year than their white counterparts. What specifically would you do to address transportation equity in the city? And I'll first ask Alejandra St. Guillen.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And, you know, this opportunity to lead with an equity lens is a huge one for our city. And when we talk about transportation, and it's funny that you quoted that, because I give that statistic all the time, we have to think about how we're leading forward, but we're leading through an equity lens. So, there are things that we can do as a city: rapid bus transit, we can do more connected bike lanes, we can do congestion pricing. And we also have to be really innovative as well. We have to think outside the box as we are fighting for, to fix the T, as we're fighting to make sure that everyone can get to work, because oftentimes, the people that are furthest from the jobs and the ones most impacted by this transit are the ones who are least able to afford to do that, because they're hourly workers. And so, I think if we push more, advance more transportation options, and then think innovatively, for example, in LA, they have low-cost electric car sharing for people who live in the outskirts of the city, and that's a way to get cars off the roads, limit emissions, and also give them more transportation options.
Any follow-up? Okay. So, we know that there are plenty of issues with public transportation in Boston. You've got delayed trains, uncollected fares, unreliable service, long wait times, you name it. If you had to pick one single thing that you would say is the biggest issue facing people trying to travel in and around Boston via public transit, what would it be? And I'll first turn to Erin Murphy.
I would think it would be the reliability. Many people feel if they're using the bus, the train, any type of MBTA service, that none of it is reliable. My niece was taking the bus and often was late for work, like, three days in one week, and then you see that the orange line is broken down. You see oftentimes, people are frustrated that it's not reliable. So, then they're just giving up on it and not using it. So, making sure that the reliability piece is there, so people will trust it again and use it.
Julia Mejia, would you like to follow up?
Sure. One minute, right?
30 seconds.
30 seconds. Okay. So, I think what I would say is, I think about late-night workers, CPAs, and folks who are having to work later hours, bartenders that don't have service after a certain hour. I think that that is also an issue. And then I also think of moms who have two to three kids and have to take kids to two or three different schools. We don't have enough trains and buses in certain neighborhoods. So, I think adding more service. But we can do all of this, and then be quiet.
Then I tie myself. All right. So, those are some issues. What are some of the solutions? Alejandra.
So, I just wanted to add to that, and also, cost is a huge issue, particularly those who are living further and further away from downtown. I live in West Roxbury, and to take the commuter rail is $6.50 one-way. So, if my wife and I were to take round-trip transportation downtown using the commuter rail, that would cost more than if we were to drive and park. We don't drive, because we don't like it. So, I think part of it is the advocacy that Michelle Wu has been doing in terms of freeing the T, in terms of fixing the T, and putting more infrastructure. And I think we can make the T free.
Michael Flaherty, how does one in the Boston City Council manage costs on the T when it's really not in your purview?
It's through the strength of advocacy. You talk about the $85 million that the city is currently assessed with the T. We don't even have a seat on the T board. That has to change. We need to reclassify the fare structure, particularly for those that travel on the commuter rail. Many of our southwest corridor residents and citizens are a big part of Boston's workforce. And also, I would support my colleagues' call for a fare-free public transit system. No reason why, given, again, the $85 million in assessment, that we shouldn't have folks being able to ride the T for free.
All right. Let's move on from those follow-ups. Michelle Wu, you have actually proposed making the T free for all riders. Specifically, how are you calculating what it would cost to do that? And how would you propose that the MBTA pay for that?
Fundamentally, we have to recognize that we're in the midst of a transportation crisis right now, that Boston is the city, unfortunately, that has the worst traffic congestion in the country. And that's impacting not just our economic productivity and the ability to connect people to jobs, but every aspect of our personal lives, people's time with their families, their ability to get to the school opportunities or social opportunities that they would like to. And so, everything we're trying to do relies on the idea that people will be able to get there, a connected, accessible, affordable public transportation system. Fundamentally, we have to recognize that public transit is a public good, that the funding for the system should not come on the backs of riders, and that we need to invest, because this will be the big-picture infrastructure that connects us to equity, climate resiliency, affordability, et cetera. It's about the same amount of money that is being paid for debt service to the Big Dig. So, this is a state issue, but there are lots of, there are a number of policy solutions on the table that I think we just need to see urgency and action in the city of Boston at the table.
But specifically, how do you make up for the huge revenue that the MBTA would take by making the T free?
It is about $420, $430 million that the T takes in from bus and subway riders every year. That is the amount that goes, about the amount that goes to pay for debt service, and it is a significant, substantial amount. We need to see lots of repairs, et cetera. But if we are being honest about what it will take to build the transportation system we deserve, regional rail connections, electrification, we are talking about doubling the operations budget for the MBTA, the financial barriers and removing barriers, so that it can be an equitable growth, needs to be part of the conversation, too.
Althea Garrison, how would we pay? The T's revenues are 40% from fares.
Well, first, Michelle Wu was the City Council President for, like, I believe, two or four years. She did nothing to improve the MBTA system. The city of Boston is assessed $85 million by the MBTA. When I was sworn in in January, I filed a bill to hold up $85 million of the T until they improve the service.
Michelle Wu, would you like an opportunity to respond?
Sure. There has been tremendous activism and leadership from the Boston City Council in the last few years when it comes to transportation. We are no longer just letting this be a state issue that the Council is helpless to take on. In this past July, over 300 people canvassed at T stations demanding better access, demanding affordability, as prices went up, even as service went down. We've been organizing people to demand commuter rail fare equity, to stand up for, pushback against fare hikes that resulted in carve-outs for our most vulnerable residents. So, we've seen progress, and we need much more.
In follow-up, Anissa Asabi George.
I just wanted to add to some of the comments, especially around the $85 million assessment that we have from the state, really for the pleasure of the T riding through our city, and we see the green line right out here, these windows today. It is important to note that we don't write a check, because that is something I think the City Council would withhold from the state. We are assessed and it is held from any of the tax payments that come to the city through the state. So, it is not, there is not an opportunity to withhold that payment to the state.
All right. Let's talk traffic. By some measures, Boston's rush-hour traffic is actually the worst in the country. Lawmakers on Beacon Hill are pushing for congestion pricing, which essentially creates higher tolls in certain parts of the city at peak times. Would you support a solution at the city level that included congestion pricing, or do you think there are better ways of reducing some of Boston's gridlock? And let's start with David Halbert.
Sure. Well, as a former resident of East Boston, a neighborhood where you do have to pay to get in and out, I know precisely and felt this each and every day of the 14 years that my family lived there, what this is like. You shouldn't have to pay to get into neighborhoods in your own city, if you're a resident. I fully and fundamentally agree with that. But I think how we're talking about transportation really should center on the connection between transportation development, transportation housing. When we look at communities like Rosendale Village, for example, where you can be a resident in that area and you can go and do your grocery shopping, but you can also go and participate in restaurants, you can go to your doctors, your dentist, all these other things that you need to do for the majority of your daily activities. If we're building communities that are like that, that are focusing around getting people out of cars in general, it's better. It's better for public safety, it's better for public health, it's better for community development and community building. I think that's where we should have more of our focus, rather than imposing tolls and fees, particularly, they're going to be onerous for folks who are at the lower end of the socioeconomic spectrum, and those who are living further outside from the center of the city.
Any follow-up?
I also wanted to make a connection between congestion and low-income communities and communities of color. Oftentimes, they're located very close to highways, and so, you have higher rates in Chinatown and in East Boston, higher rates of asthma and weatherborne allergies. And so, I think, I agree with David, that congestion pricing, not for people who live within the city, but those that are coming in and have the benefit of using our highways, should pay so that we can alleviate some of that.
Anissa Asabi George, doesn't that disadvantage people who don't have control over when they can come in and out of the city and maybe don't have other viable transportation options?
Well, really, is an additional response to the first question that you asked. And when we have a system, like Erin said, that's reliable, and we have additional services made available to residents, both in the city and outside the city, and a system that is interconnected, so it's not just all about going to the core, but communities are connected to one another, similar to the Beltway, is when we think about what 95 and 128 does, what 495 does. The interconnectedness of the system and communities to one another, within the city of Boston and outside of the city of Boston, can reduce traffic and congestion in our city limits.
So, Erin Murphy, that would imply some ability to coordinate with metropolitan areas. Greater Boston is, you know, sort of the bulwark of this system, and yet, you are running to be a Boston City Councilor. So, how does the City Council gain leverage and coordination with other areas of greater Boston to solve some of these really intractable traffic and transportation problems?
Right. So, so many people from outside of the city come into our, you know, our city using transportation, driving, hospitals, libraries, everything. So, we need to have relationships with the surrounding neighborhoods and open conversations about how they can support and help the fees and the costs that are causing this traffic congestion. You're talking about traffic in general. I live in Dorchester, and many people come right off the Granite Ave exit, and there's lots of traffic, and it takes 20 minutes to get right through Adams Corner, like, at any time during the day. So, really, looking at ways to alleviate traffic, but having those conversations with the surrounding neighborhoods of how they can step up and support and help.
Let's talk about David Halbert. Go ahead. You can follow up.
Well, I think the conversation around regionalization is one that's critical for the future of the city of Boston, but it doesn't just center on transportation, whether we're talking about transportation, whether we're talking about the housing crisis that's facing not just Boston as a discrete issue, but really all of our region here in the metro area, when we're talking about the opioid issue. And we saw what happened during, unfortunately, Operation Clean Sweep, where I believe over half of the individuals that were caught up in that, unfortunately, were coming from outside of the city of Boston. We know that the solutions for our city futures don't just exist here within the city limits, and it's important and incumbent upon us as city councilors and others, operational government, to work with our partners throughout the region in order to make those kind of decisions and make sure that we're sharing the burden.
So, moving on to a discussion about parking. Michael Flaherty, you've opposed Michelle Wu's proposal for annual fees for residential parking permits, and suggested that eliminating or shrinking the runway for bus stops might be a better way to free up parking spaces in Boston. Do you stand behind that as the best solution for lack of parking in the city? And what other ideas would you suggest to increase parking availability?
Yes. Well, one of the things is, we need to do an audit to find out exactly how many parking many parking spaces we have. We can't charge someone for something that is not available in their respective community, particularly for the densely populated communities. We do have a parking crunch in our city. You talk to families, particularly working families, blue collar families, that many working, not one, not two, sometimes three jobs to make ends meet, and needing their vehicle, very much like trash collection. If we were to charge for trash collection, but then we didn't pick up your trash, and I want to make sure that we do a complete audit first before we start to charge for something. Make sure that we identify exactly how many available parking spaces there are, how many vehicles there are. But also, we need to do more. We need protected bike lanes, we need pedestrian safety measures, we need to think outside the box, the dedicated bus lanes, scooters that recently passed. So we all have a stake here. It shouldn't be one group being pitted against the other, in this particular instance, sort of the motorist, or the city resident that depends on their vehicle and depends on a parking space near their home.
Michelle Wu, last opportunity to follow up before we move on.
Boston's paying for our traffic one way or the other. The estimate is that 30% of traffic in neighborhoods actually is coming from people circling around looking for parking. And particularly in the neighborhoods where there are way more permits given out for parking spaces than there are spots on the street, because Boston, unlike cities around us, doesn't charge anything and has no limit on them, it means that we are then putting higher rates of asthma in communities, more pollution into the air. So this is about a conversation we need to have very honestly about the role where we find funding for public transit, and how do we ensure that we're creating equitable outcomes.
You are listening to a special edition of Radio Boston, live from WBUR City Space. This is a debate between the eight candidates for four at-large city council seats, sponsored by WBUR and our partners at UMass Boston's McCormick Graduate School of Policy and Global Studies and The Boston Globe. We're broadcasting live on 90.9 WBUR and streaming live on YouTube. You can find a link to that feed on the Radio Boston homepage, radioboston.org. We're going to turn now to a question submitted by Michael Ward, acting director of the Collins Center for Public Management at UMass Boston, who wants to know where you stand on the structure of Boston city government.
The Boston City Charter, which is like the Constitution of the city, is an arguably haphazard collection of laws that extends all the way back to 1909. Given the enormous demographic changes in the city and in the region over the last several decades, do you believe Boston's organizational structure currently meets the needs of the public?
Julia Mahia.
Mahia, no.
Mahia, thank you.
I do not. I think this is one of the reasons why I support an elected school board. I think that, right now, there's too much power in one place. And while I am really happy to see the amount of energy and efforts that city councillor Wu and Ayanna Pressley and others have been able to do, I still think that we have an opportunity to redesign that structure and create more opportunities for city councillors to have a bigger say. We're not just here to approve the budget. I think we actually need to build better infrastructure for community-centered approaches to identify what it is that we want to see built in our communities. And I think that, right now, the way the charter is set up, that gives us very limited power. So yes, absolutely.
Now that we've mentioned the mayor and the power of the mayor, I have a question for whoever wants it. What grade would you give Mayor Walsh for his tenure in office?
I would give Mayor Walsh a B. He's trying very hard, and he is getting a lot of work done.
I would say, and I have said publicly in the past, I think C minus needs improvement. I think that we are at a critical time. There are a lot of folks who don't feel like their voices are being heard and decisions are being made for us, not with us. And I think that we have an opportunity to change the way we do business in the city of government, and he gets a C minus from me at this point in time.
Anyone else?
Come on, guys. Keep it real now.
I'll chime in here. As a former classroom teacher who often gives out grades, we can think about this rubric, and we have to think about the content, and certainly, the subject matter. As a former teacher and the chair of the Committee on Education, we spend a lot of our time working on our schools and that education. And for me, oftentimes, we grade the mayor based on our schools. And I would say that he earns a B for me when we talk about our schools. There is room to be, for improvement across the district. When we talk about climate resiliency and readiness in the city of Boston, compared to other cities our side across this nation, the mayor gets an A. Compared to European countries, we're behind, but we are making strides.
Adrian Otis, I believe it's, being CEO of Boston, it's the hardest job in Boston, and you get pulled in a thousand directions on a day-to-day basis. And I'll leave it to the schoolteachers up here in terms of how, what their rubric is in terms of grading with conduct, effort, attendance. He gets an A minus. He's working extremely hard, always room for improvement. That's for everybody up here, and as well as out in the audience, that we can always do a little better. But from a work ethic standpoint, from an accessibility standpoint, you know, he has, he keeps a pretty intense pace and cares deeply about the city. And as a CEO, I would consider an A minus.
Okay, I'd like to move on to another issue that's crucial to the future of the city of Boston, housing and development. We all know that Boston has been experiencing a development boom, but the effects are not all positive. The Boston Globe, you may have heard of it, reports that from 2013 to 2018, the median price of a single-family house in Roxbury rose from $237,500 to $455,000, an increase of 91.6%. You've seen comparable increases in other neighborhoods across the city. How would you specifically work to make sure that more people are not forced to move out of Boston because they simply can't afford it anymore? And what would you say to people who say the city council has not done enough to keep Boston affordable? I'd like to direct this question first to David Halbert.
Thank you. And I believe that there's a lot of policy interventions that we can exercise on behalf of the city in terms of stabilizing our communities from a housing perspective. And I'm not just saying that as an academic or as a candidate, I'm taking that as somebody who's felt this. You know, my wife and I spent 14 years in East Boston, a community that we grew to love and that we're still very connected to. And now, we live in Dorchester, and we're happy to be there. But what sent us to Dorchester was the fact that we couldn't find a home for our growing family in our neighborhood. And if we couldn't, we know that that's facing so many others. So I would say we need to, one, increase the inclusionary development policy number. Right now, it's at 13%. I've called as many have for an increase to a minimum of 20%. And I think we can go higher than that. But I think in order to do that, we have to have responsible conversations, where we bring in individuals who are on the housing and community stabilization side along with developers, so we can have everyone at the table and have a consensus about that going forward. We need to think about how we're addressing the affordable, excuse me, area median income, and whether that's still the appropriate standard in which to apply for housing affordability. And once again, we need to have not just a local conversation here in Boston, but also a regional conversation about everyone sharing and fairly in this crisis.
Julia Mahia, you've proposed increasing the percentage of units in certain developments that would have to be affordable from 13% to 50%. This policy ultimately comes under the mayor's control. As a councillor, how would you try to raise the threshold? And what would you say to developers who say that 50% is unworkable?
Right, I always think about AOC, and how loud and bold she is and the things that she wants to see. And I think that we can't, we can no longer afford to push for incremental change, right? The needs of Boston requires that we are, we act bolder. If we ask for 50%, we might get 30. But if we're only asking for 20, we're lucky if we get 15 or 18. So I think that we have an opportunity to negotiate. And I think that if we're not building for the city of Boston, then we have to ask ourselves, who are we building for? And I agree with my colleague over here, Dave Halbert, in regards to really creating an opportunity to build consensus. I think that we have an opportunity to really change the way we do business in the city of Boston, and that includes bringing developers to the table and helping them recognize that at the end of the day, we can no longer continue to price people out. Right now, there are six members of the network that I lead that have been priced out, and now are living in Brockton because they can no longer afford to live in Boston. And those folks have to commute every single day to still work here in Boston. So we really need to be bolder and louder and pushing for the type of change that we want to see here in the city of Boston.
Alejandra.
I just want to focus back on the point of AMI, because it's a huge one, in area median income, in that it's set by the federal government. And so, whether it's 13%, 20%, 50%, people are still not going to be able to meet the area median income. And so, we have to really look at, what are the bold initiatives that we can do as a city? Maybe a capital investment to be able to compete on the private market and maintain affordability based on census tract, not on area median income.
Michelle Wu, you've proposed that the city get rid of the department, the Boston Planning and Development Agency, arguing that it has too much autonomy and ignores community input. You want the city to reestablish a planning board and a planning department. But would you argue that the pure cities you cite in your report, like San Francisco, New York, and Seattle, have avoided the kind of development woes that are plaguing us here in Boston?
I'm glad I have a minute, and I hear you have an opinion on this, Adrian.
I'm not on the ballot.
So, look, the way that we do development in Boston right now is through a system of special approvals and exceptions. Our base zoning code is very out of date, that is functionally obsolete. Every new parcel, every new development is a new negotiation, a new conversation, rewriting zoning code for that spot and for that development. What it means is that there's a lot of speculation. When one developer has a relationship, they can get a higher density approved than another one. It means that we have inconsistency. And for Boston to say, we're going to aim for 53,000 new units or 69,000 new units of housing without doing the planning to specify where those units can go so the city can grow sustainably, equitably, that we can continue to have affordability, manage our climate change vulnerability, that it leads to what we see today. We cannot be just focusing on attracting mega corporations and tens of thousands of new jobs without investing in the infrastructure to accommodate that growth on the housing side and the transportation side.
Mike Flaherty.
Adrian, I'm on record 10 years ago calling for a standalone planning department. I've always said that, you know, failing to plan is planning to fail. And I always felt there was an inherent conflict between the planning arm of our city and the economic development arm. But I want to recognize that the Boston Redevelopment Authority has some pretty unique tools that are invaluable, particularly as we're going through a period of unexperienced growth and development. And you think about the large number of dedicated employees up there that have expertise in urban planning, in transportation, in environmental, there are invaluable tools that are helping us as we move our city forward.
Anissa Asabi George, the Zoning Board of Appeal was caught up in an ongoing bribery scandal after a former city employee pleaded guilty to accepting a bribe to help influence a vote. Would you support councillor Lydia Edwards' proposal to bar ZBA staff from participating in the real estate business and eliminate the requirement for a ZBA member to be nominated by the Greater Boston Real Estate Board?
It sounds almost like a yes or no question. I have supported and did support when councillor Edwards brought that hearing order before us at the city council a few weeks ago. I think the most important piece is that our communities across our city, every neighborhood feels that their voice is heard, that there's a certain level of transparency in the process that the ZBA takes on, and that we are looking to reform the notification process so communities aren't hearing last minute when there's a project before the ZBA. I think we have, certainly have room for more representation on the ZBA. There's been a call for, and some of this language was used in councillor Edwards' hearing order, about a renter, about community members having a seat at the table. We do need professionals at the table who have knowledge about the industry, who understand what a good project is versus not a good project in the marketplace. It's important to have, but it should not be done at the exclusion of our other community members.
Anyone else?
I think also, as a renter myself, I have a unique perspective on this housing crisis and being able to afford to stay in the city. And to the zoning board, I think we need to be more transparent and really look who sits there. And we have too many conflicts of interest, but I don't think we should just throw it all away. I think we should look closely, maybe have a city council member sit on there, because we would have to answer back to the people. And look at who's being appointed, and everything needs to be definitely more transparent, because the neighborhoods don't feel like their voice is ever heard, and they're not part of the process all the way through. So to make sure neighbors and people have a voice.
I support councillor Edwards' proposal and think we need to be stricter and clearer about conflicts of interest throughout city boards and commissions. There are many places where people are recusing themselves in all different, very important decision-making roles. But what I want to emphasize is that as long as we have a system where the majority of construction and development projects are having to go before the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special approval and exception, we will always have a system that is driven by influence and relationships. So we need to start with the planning that turns into clear zoning, matching community needs, so that we're having a Zoning Board of Appeals actually focusing on the exceptions.
I want to move on to another question about development. Here's how Tom O'Brien, the former head of the Boston Redevelopment Authority, before it was renamed, describes the development of one of the most desirable parcels of land in the Seaport. Vampire from a planning and urban design perspective is a disaster. Critics of the Seaport's development say there aren't enough affordable homes, there aren't enough open spaces, there aren't enough neighborhood amenities. O'Brien is now redeveloping Suffolk Downs, and that is arguably the next big development project for the city. How should the city avoid the same mistakes on Suffolk Downs that were made in the Seaport? And I'd like councillor Flaherty to start.
Thank you, Adrian. I'd like to see Suffolk Downs be transit-oriented as well as deeply affordable and environmentally sound to provide economic opportunities for, first, East Boston residents, given that they're the host community. A lot of the mistakes that we made in my neighborhood in South Boston, particularly around the South Boston waterfront, was that we took a lot of that affordable housing. It was the previous administration did the off-site contribution. And so, it almost has this sort of Manhattan, New York feel to it. It doesn't really feel that it's an extension of the neighborhood. And that was a huge mistake that we made as a city, but really, it was the previous administration took the off-site affordable contributions and built lots of housing, affordable housing across the city. But that doesn't look like a neighborhood here in the city of Boston. So I think Tom O'Brien has an opportunity there over in East Boston to do something really special, to learn from the mistakes that were made in the South Boston waterfront so that we can make Suffolk Downs, as well as the East Boston waterfront, a model for future development.
Alejandra, thank you.
I think also, another key mistake of the Seaport is the lack of climate resiliency when they were building it. And having East Boston be in a similar place as that it's near the water, we have to really look at how we are building and how we're being climate resilient, because we cannot just have certain people who are afford to be climate resilient and others who can't. And so, I think that, you know, and it's interesting, the Seaport was developed the same year that the Green Ribbon Report came out, and we didn't use any of the Green Ribbon Report recommendations when putting in the Seaport. So I think that climate resiliency is one of the key areas that we need to think about when doing our Suffolk Downs.
David Halbert.
I think that one of the other mistakes that we made in the development of the Seaport, and that I hope we don't repeat with Suffolk Downs, is the fact that there wasn't the equity in terms of the economic opportunity. There are hundreds, if not thousands, of workers, particularly black and brown workers in the construction industry, who didn't have access to those millions of dollars of investment and opportunities. And it's not just about the paycheck that they would have brought home each and every week, but it's about what that would have done for them, their families, and their communities, in creating the kind of intergenerational wealth that really can help stabilize communities. We can't look at what's happening with rental prices, with housing, and not see a link back to the economic opportunities that need to be there for each and every person in the city of Boston.
All right, you're listening to a special edition of Radio Boston, live from WBUR City Space. This is a debate between the eight candidates for four at-large city council seats, sponsored by WBUR and our partners at UMass Boston's McCormick Graduate School of Policy and Global Studies and The Boston Globe. We're broadcasting live on 90.9 WBUR, and we're streaming live on YouTube. You can find a link to that feed on the Radio Boston homepage at radioboston.org. All right, we've been pretty wonky so far, so we're going to take a second to do what's called a lightning round. I'm going to ask a question, and you're going to give like, a three-word answer. And we're going to start with Anissa Asabi George, and just work our way down the table. So your lightning round question is, what is your favorite thing to do in Boston when someone visits from out of town? Anissa Asabi George.
Oh, it's such a great question. If I've got spare time, I'm bringing them to one of my kids' hockey, football, baseball, basketball games.
All right, Michael Flaherty.
I'd take them up to Dorchester Heights and show them all where it started. If it wasn't for the battle of the Dorchester Heights, we would be all, would sound like we're from England.
Althea Garrison.
I'll take a good walk in Complish Square and see the different designs of buildings and things.
David Halbert.
Support one of our local small businesses, particularly our restaurants. You know, we have an incredible culinary history, and if you ever try to get a table at Reno's in East Boston, you know it's true.
Julia Mahia.
I think to the best place I have Mangu, which is Merengue Restaurant. And I also like the Little Duck Tour. That's the only time I get to enjoy it, when I have some friends who come along with it.
Erin Murphy.
I love acting like a tourist in my own city and taking the train to downtown, walking[1701.33]
through City Hall Plaza, Faneuil Hall, and then definitely ending with dinner in the North End.
Alejandro Sanquias?
So always to Oriental de Cuba in Jamaica Plain, followed by Jamaica Pond, and then ending up in the North End for dinner as well.
And Michelle Wu?
We go to dim sum in Chinatown.
Excellent, thank you, everyone. So we're going to turn now to a question submitted by Pam Nadasch, professor in the Gerontology Department at UMass Boston, who has a question about public higher education in the city.
One of the things the city of Boston is known for is the many elite institutions of higher education we have here. But we are not known for our public institutions of higher education. What is your view on the role that UMass Boston has to play in ensuring access to high-quality public education for the many low-income and new Americans living in the greater Boston area?
And I'd like to turn first to Althea Garrison.
I think one thing is that they could, at UMass, they could keep the education very low, and that would help a lot of low-income families attend BU.
So when you say keep the education low, you mean keeping tuition down?
Tuition down, fees, because they charge fees and all that, keep that down.
Let's turn to a former teacher, Anissa Asabi George, for follow-up.
Thank you for the question. I think UMass Boston, for example, is an incredible gem here in our city. I'm proud to have earned my master's in education from UMass Boston. And for me, as a former high school teacher especially, I often use the hashtag City Kids Win. And when our kids have access to these institutions, especially the UMasses of this state, but in particular UMass Boston, it provides them with an opportunity not just succeed academically, but succeed in life. So go UMass.
I'm going to give room for two more follow-ups. First, Erin Murphy?
So as a twenty-two-year Boston public school teacher, I think we absolutely need to be preparing all of our students for these great colleges that are here. I am a proud UMass Boston graduate, and my two college-age students are at state schools now. My son is a sophomore at Mass Maritime, and my daughter is a senior at Bridgewater State. So we really need to encourage our students and to be prepared to go to these colleges.
Actually, a lot of people are interested in this one. Let's keep going. Michael Flaherty?
UMass is a great institution. We boast probably having one of the best nursing programs in the country. It quite frankly should be the flagship of the UMass system, not Amherst, it should be in Boston, T accessible, and also it provides tremendous opportunity for working families, commuters, and those that didn't come through school the traditional way. And it's been a gem for our city.
So David Halbert, at one point, there had been some discussion, Mayor Walsh suggested that the city could take over UMass Boston in 2018. Is that an idea that you would support? And are there any other actions you would take regarding UMass Boston?
So in regards to the city taking over UMass Boston, no, I wouldn't support that. And I say that as a graduate myself of a public higher education institution, Massachusetts College of Liberal Arts North Adams. And while I was there, I had the privilege of serving as a student member on the Board of Higher Education in a year that Governor Romney, then Governor Romney, was trying to make some very critical and fundamental changes to the structure of our public higher education system. Look, our public higher education system writ large across the state is the pathway to generational change for many families. It provides that open door and that opportunity for greater education, greater economic opportunities, different job perspectives, and opening yourself up to a world larger than, larger than and beyond what your blocks are that you grew up on. So I think we have to do everything we can to preserve it, but also as academic institutions to do everything we can to preserve their independence as much as we can. In terms of what the city can do, though, it's what we can do to work in with our state delegation to invest in the transportation infrastructure to get students to and from the campus, what we can do to support it, and what we can do to make sure that students in Boston Public Schools know that it is a high-quality education and that they should avail themselves of.
Okay, I'm going to stop you there, and I'm going to move, I'm going to move us on now to addiction and policing. Our next topic is one that affects residents and families not just in Boston, but around the country. Let's start with supervised consumption sites. That is places where people can use illegal opioids under medical supervision. Suffolk County DA Rachel Rollins called a recent federal court ruling in Pennsylvania in favor of supervised consumption sites, quote, "an historic turning point," end quote. And she's calling on the legislature to approve a pilot program that would allow supervised consumption sites in Massachusetts. Would you support such a supervised consumption site, and why or why not? And I will start with Alejandro Sanquias.
Okay, excellent, thank you. So I think one of the things is, we have to really move, when we're talking about opioid addiction, when we're talking about drug addiction, that this is a human issue above everything else, and that's how we should address it. I support safe consumption sites. They have been shown to really help in harm reduction. And so when we're looking at people who are battling addiction, our first and foremost focus should be on their health and their well-being. And so for that reason, I support a supervised consumption site.
Julia Mahia?
I do too as well. But for me, I think that we, I lost a cousin to a heroin overdose, and so for me, this is very personal. At my campaign office, we also witnessed someone who OD, who was overdosing. My nine-year-old daughter also witnessed that. So we did an arcane training. I think this is a conversation that we're having across the city. I think this is an opportunity for us to have spaces where people can be treated. And what I have also have come to learn is that once people are in safe consumption sites, that they're also able to, are more likely to get the harm reduction services that they need and maybe even transition out.
Anissa Asabi George, you're the Chair of the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health and Recovery. I want to ask you, if you could pick only one resource or program, what is Boston's most immediate pressing need in terms of dealing with the opioid epidemic?
Sure, as Chair of that Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health and Recovery, I've led the conversation, in fact, brought the conversation about recovery, about addiction, about safe consumption sites to the city council through a number of hearings and working sessions. And I think that this really is a conversation about access to recovery and longer-term services. We need in this Commonwealth at least twenty-five hundred additional recovery beds. The work to rebuild the Long Island Bridge will bring additional recovery services, including about five hundred recovery beds, to that campus, but that is years away. We need a regional approach to recovery. We need to be more than just Boston, and most of the issues that are facing Boston have to be regional approaches. Boston can lead the way and will continue to lead the way in this work, but we need additional services, and a big piece of that is recovery beds.
Michael Flaherty for follow-up, and then Erin Murphy?
I would say it's treatment on demand, more beds for longer periods of time, the spin dries, the three, four days, even thirty days. If you're on the opioids for an extended period of time, you need at least a year, arguably fifteen, eighteen months of good, clean living just to have a fighting chance to beat that problem.
Erin Murphy?
So I agree what was already said, but I think we often forget that maybe we need to go back to the young kids, right? Give them hope and let them know. So programming in schools, curriculum, training, education in schools around trauma, because addiction is always, almost always connected with mental health and trauma. So make sure that we're training our teachers, our staff at the schools, we're giving kids hope. If there's more programming, jobs for teens and other programming to support that.
Mayor Walsh has pledged to rebuild the bridge to Long Island so that Boston can build and open an addiction treatment facility there. Quincy City Councilors have fought the effort over concerns that developing Long Island would lead to a huge new influx of traffic for them. Hundreds of thousands of dollars of legal fees have already been spent battling this out. Should the city open an addiction treatment center on Long Island? And how would you handle the ongoing tension between Boston and Quincy over the bridge? Michelle Wu?
We're talking about a current ninety-two million dollar estimate to rebuild the Long Island Bridge entirely out of city funds, up from an estimate of eighty-some million dollars a few years ago. By the time that this happens, even if we were able to get permits tomorrow, it would still be a three-to-five-year process to rebuild the bridge, not to mention the funding for new buildings and where the beds would actually, the services actually provided on the island. I have deep concerns about whether this is the most effective and immediate way to address the opiate crisis. We need solutions at the scale and urgency of the problem. And by the time this happens, it will be most likely a hundred million dollar more project for one single bridge that will be out to a very climate-vulnerable part of the city. We are already seeing flooding throughout all of Boston. And I think with a hundred million dollars, we should have an intense conversation about how we could more immediately use those resources to have regional coordination today.
Should the treatment center go somewhere else? And if so, where?
The resource that I think we need most is willing regional partners to talk about this issue. Boston will certainly be a place that we have to expand capacity for longer-term treatment. I think we have to absolutely preserve the Shattuck Hospital as one location that will remain a healthcare asset for the city. I think we also have to talk about how our neighborhood health centers could better provide medically assisted treatment for addiction and recovery as well.
I think we're going to go straight down the line here. Alejandro Sanquias?
I think we, definitely we should measure the efficiency. I do think, however, we need to look to our experts in drug counseling and drug addiction and find out if there is an absolute benefit to having, if someone is going through recovery and it's a distance away from their home. I think there might be an element there that makes it worth it to be, to do it over again. But yes, we need to look at the efficiency and how it works, but we do have to bring in the experts when we're talking about these issues.
Erin Murphy?
So this is a personal, to me, my son Brian, who had been struggling with addiction for several years, and we watched him overdosing and in and out of emergency rooms, was finally found his detox bed on Long Island in October of 2014. And he called me that night on the phone. And if anyone knows, if your loved one is in recovery, you don't want the phone to ring because they don't have access to the phone. And he was in a cab leaving Long Island, so he was on the bridge the night it closed. And his treatment was interrupted. And a couple months later, he was very fortunate to find his way back to the Gavin House and is doing better now, but many people that night weren't. So I'm one hundred percent in support of rebuilding it. I know it will take some time, so we need to do something before then, but I'm in support of it.
Thank you. One more follow-up from Michael Flaherty?
The combination of permitting, construction, litigation, and appeals, talking probably five, six, maybe even seven years, we need to act now. Suburban legislators and suburban communities need to step up to the plate and meet us halfway. To Adrian's question is, yes, we should be citing detox facilities somewhere else. It pains me to hear a suburban legislator come out and start to cheerlead for safe injection sites, but when you ask if they're willing to lead the effort in their own community, you hear Three Stooges.
Although the mayors of both Cambridge and Somerville have said that they are ready to do it in their communities right now.
Right, I'm talking to both cities. I'm talking suburban communities. Let's put something in Wellesley, let's put something in Westwood, let's put something in Lexington. Treatment facilities, halfway houses, three-quarter houses, detox facilities, you get crickets from our suburban counterparts, yet it's their kids, it's their constituents that are down at Mass and Cass.
So how do you bridge past that? David Halbert, how do you convince other communities in greater Boston to begin to better collaborate, share resources, and make investments in the addiction crisis?
First, we have to remember the fact that, as we said, this is a regional issue, and that when we're looking at those individuals that are coming from in those communities, you know, places like Framingham, you know, where I grew up before I moved to the city. We also have to remember that we need to approach this whole conversation with a sense of compassion. That is absolutely critical. And talking to these individuals about intervention beforehand, you know, my work before this was with the Middlesex Sheriff's Office. Ninety percent of the individuals were in our custody, many of the same percentages and numbers at Suffolk. Those are individuals who are dealing with issues around addiction, around mental health. If we can get intervention services in before folks are dealing with these issues, it's critically important. And we should do things like having safe disposal for drugs for seniors.
Okay, thank you. I want to turn our focus slightly to policing. In August, the Boston Police Department conducted what it called Operation Clean Sweep. It was a two-day action that resulted in thirty-four arrests. Of those arrested, eighteen were taken into custody solely for active warrants, and nearly half of those were for outstanding warrants on drug possession. Do you believe the Boston Police Department's actions were appropriate? And Althea Garrison, I want to start with you.
I think it was just cause, when they raided and arrested those people, it was a very just cause. There's a lot of people that pay taxes in that area. I have friends that live in that area. And they're getting a bad deal with all those drug addicts over in that area. And by the way, I'm against injection sites because the federal government have already said if they put injection sites in the city of Boston, that they were going to prosecute whoever put them up and everything.
So Althea Garrison, you are against supervised injection sites. Often, especially in the area around Melnea Cast and Massachusetts Avenue, we see an intersection of issues around homelessness as well as issues around addiction. You are a strong advocate of rent control despite the fact that it's been, you know, banned at the state level. How do you marry the empathy for affordability in housing with what sounds like a much sharper critique of responsiveness and empathy towards people experiencing addiction?
The city council is going to have to reconsider rent control. That's the honest problem with solving the homeless problem, is the city council reconsider rent control. They don't want to do it because a lot of them are in development, like Sabah Jard's husband is a developer, so you know that she doesn't.
But the city council does not have the authority to implement rent control.
They have the authority to propose it, file a home rule petition, and get it on the ballot, and let the people decide for their own selves, for the city of Boston, whether they want rent control or not. This was decided by, other than the city of Boston, did not vote for rent control.
So we've got a lot of people who want to follow up. Let's go Erin Murphy?
So I've often, I often drive through Mount Lea Cast, the light there, and we see that it just has been a problem for a long time. It's been bubbling up. And I want to say that oftentimes in the city, we react, we're not proactive, so I think this was a good example of the city reacting to something that had been an issue and not listening to the neighbors, the school, the businesses. So we have to look at all of those affected. Of course, we need to treat those, people struggling on the street, if it's mental health, homelessness, addiction, that there are services out there, we need to make sure we're getting them their services, but we shouldn't react.
So what I believe is that Boston is resource-rich but coordination-poor. And I think that we have an opportunity to really, really evaluate how we're pouring resources into where the areas of need are the greatest. I also believe that it's really unfortunate that it took this incident to really help people understand what is going on in Melina Cast right now. Orchard Gardens Elementary School is by there, kids are getting pricked by needles every single day. But it took this incident and the response to really show who is being paid more attention to. And so I think that we have an opportunity to change that.
David Halbert?
I think this is a complete textbook example of where we need to invest more resources. Look, the city, by its own admission, picks up fourteen thousand needles every day off of our streets, right? If we can have things like these safe injection sites in our communities, that's one way to get those off. And I say that, you know, once again, not just as a candidate, but I say that as a parent, because every time I take my daughter to a park, one of my gravest concerns is that she's going to prick herself on a needle, and it's going to change our lives. No parent in the city of Boston should ever have to live under that kind of fear. And it is, to Julia's point, critically, an issue of equity around the fact that people in South End and Orchard Gardens weren't getting the kind of response they needed from the city about this.
Okay, last follow-up before I go to the next question. Althea Garrison?
What I think need to happen is also more enforcement. When we had more enforcement of drug addicts, we didn't have all this crisis in the city. You saw less people are homeless, less people on the streets. We need to enforce laws, period.
Can I just say we should never police drug addiction or substance abuse? Ever.
We also have to look at, there's been a significant reduction in the number of mental health beds that are available in this Commonwealth. A number of years ago, we had almost twenty-five hundred beds. We are now down to about six hundred beds. This is a crisis of poverty, this is a crisis of unemployment, this is a crisis of trauma, of a lack of access to mental health resources that often leads to addiction. Those are the problems that we need to fix.
So Alejandro Sanquias, one can imagine that there are legitimate claims and concerns on both sides of this debate, that public safety, streets that are clean and safe, neighborhoods that feel vibrant, and the desire not to police addiction, take punitive, unconstructive approaches. Those are tensions that constituents who might both vote for you will both have. How, as an elected official, would you balance and manage the tensions of competing legitimate claims among your constituents?
That's a great question. I know it's an issue, going back to what Julia was saying, in terms of equity. So we're looking at and how we're addressing the issue. I know our constituents in Whister Square are particularly impacted by this issue. So they should definitely be first and foremost at the table as we're coming up with the solutions, as well as those that are in Orchard Gardens. I went to the South End Community Meeting that was held by the city after Operation Clean Sweep first started, and there was a whole group that came from Roxbury, led actually by one of our former candidates, saying, "We have been fighting this, we've been fighting to have attention for so many years, and we've never received it." And so I understand that there's a tension there. I also do believe that people are at the heart of who they are, they want to be compassionate. And so, but everyone deserves to live in peace, everyone deserves to be able to go out on their stoop and not have someone doing drugs or defecating in their lawn. So I think that there is, there is a tension there, but if we bring the stakeholders to the table and we explain what we can do, and we invest more in services to prevent, preventative services, we can get there.
Thank you. Moving on, one more question under this subject. WBUR recently reported that the Boston Police Department worked nine thousand hours of overtime during the recent straight pride parade, but not a single minute of that was captured by body cameras because the Boston Police Department policy doesn't require officers to wear the cameras during any overtime shifts. The Boston Police Patrolmen's Association, the union that represents Boston police officers, has resisted the body camera program, and its president, Michael Leary, wrote in the union's most recent newsletter, quote, "I hear you all loud and clear, we do not want body cameras. I understand, I do not want body cameras either. If there was any legal way to prevent the body-worn camera program from being implemented, we would have done it yesterday, but there isn't," end quote. What do you make of the resistance inside the BPD? And would you support expanding the body camera program into overtime in other areas? Let's start with Michelle Wu.
I would support, I would support expanding it. I think at the foundation, and this ties back to the last question, we don't have to accept the false choice between actions for public safety or actions for public health. That generally, when we are taking something that creates community, builds trust, it is also in the name of public safety and gets us to better outcomes there as well. I've been part of efforts on the council to make sure that there was a community-driven policy in place to manage the body camera rollout in partnership with our now council president, Andrea Campbell, and others on the council. We need to have a policy like this for every single bit of surveillance technology that any city department, whether it's Boston Police or traffic cameras, et cetera, might have. The foundation of trust requires that there's accountability for residents and for law enforcement. So I'll be working, continuing, and knock on wood in the next term with an ordinance and a policy talking about facial recognition technology and other surveillance forms that we need to make sure community is part of.
Okay, last follow-up, David Halbert.
I'm 100% supportive of the expansion of this for all officers. I think that particularly for our black and brown communities in the city, there is a lack of distrust, unfortunately, and that makes everyone less safe, not just the residents, but also those officers. You know, my neighbor across the street is a great guy, he's a police officer, and I hope he comes home each and every night safe and secure to his family. And I think the more that we can do to create that kind of structure, the better we can. That's why I've also called for an expansion and more investment in the community oversight panel, because I think that when we can hold those who are individuals at the far end of the spectrum, who are bad actors in place, that can also lay the groundwork for the kind of trust we need in our communities.
Okay, thank you. You are listening to a special edition of Radio Boston, live from WBUR City Space. This is a debate between the eight candidates for four at-large city council seats, sponsored by WBUR and our partners at UMass Boston's McCormick Graduate School of Policy and Global Studies and the Boston Globe. We're broadcasting live on 90.9 WBUR, and we're streaming live video on YouTube. You can find a link to that feed on the Radio Boston homepage, radioboston.org.
And now it is time for the second lightning round question, which is, what was the last thing you binged, on Netflix or Hulu? We'll start with Michelle, we'll start the other end.
Game of Thrones, it was a while ago.
Schitt's Creek.
I didn't swear that's the name of the show.
I don't watch TV.
Not those shows, sorry.
Oh, God. I don't have time to watch TV. I'm a single mom.
I still got to catch up on Succession.
I don't watch TV either.
Netflix, Game of Thrones.
I don't binge-watch anything but the sports channel, because it's usually on in my house for the boys.
All right, we turn now to a question submitted by Celine Voyard, a revered native and a student at UMass Boston.
A lot of politicians say how, in order for change to be done, people have to be more politically involved. What would you do to provide greater access to childcare in Boston so that working families can be more politically active?
Well, Julia Mahia, you lit up so much at that question, we'll start with you.
I love that question. I think she wrote it just for me. So one of the questions that I always get asked is, what would be my first public hearing? And I always say I'm going to do a hearing on public hearings, because oftentimes they happen at 11 o'clock in the morning, when oftentimes working folks can't participate. But then I take one step further. I also say that I would like to propose that we offer childcare. In my campaign office, we offer childcare because what we want to do is remove barriers to engagement. And I think we have an opportunity to put our values where our budget is and provide free childcare to parents, as well as I want to make sure that we have interpretation and translation available at all public hearings. And I'd love to see those public hearings happen in our neighborhood so that we're not trekking all the way to City Hall every single time when we want to get heard. And then I also would love to be able to explore, how can we create opportunities for the public to be the first to speak, instead of waiting two or three hours just to be heard? I think right now, we usually have the dignitaries and the electeds who have your first opportunity to speak. I think that we have an opportunity to change the way we do business and allowing those who are most impacted to have the first word.
As a mom of a two-year-old, I think it would be game-changing in the city of Boston to offer childcare. When I led O East Day, and we focused on a program called Latinas Pod del Cambio, where we were training Latino women to really be involved and engaged, it was absolutely necessary that we provided childcare at night. It is an absolute game-changer and something that we can afford to invest in. We can do it through our luxury sales tax, we can do it through full payment of pilot programs, the resources are there to provide it, we just need to have the political will to do it.
And we could also do that, I'm sorry, speaking out of turn.
But I think that, should I speak?
Quickly.
Okay. I think that we have an opportunity to not just look at the city resources in terms of dollars, but we also can look at how we can engage in nonprofit organizations in this process and create opportunities for folks to help us solve this issue so that it's not all just tax-driven, but that we create opportunities for early childhood centers to participate in that process, and colleges and universities as well.
Thank you. Time is running short, so I'm going to move to our final topic for this afternoon, which is education. The state legislature spent a long time crafting a compromise education funding bill that balanced increased state aid with an additional $1.4 billion over seven years with an accountability function that would allow the State Commissioner of Education and Secondary Education to review district plans and reject any found to be not in compliance. The Senate passed the bill earlier this month, but not before amending and effectively removing the accountability measure, putting the entire bill at risk. Now the House has restored the original language as they approached their own vote. Should the state commissioner have the ability to reject district plans? I'd like to ask this question first to Anissa Asabi George.
I wonder why, as a former high school teacher in Boston and as someone who has participated, especially around, you're asking about the accountability piece, I've participated both as a teacher being reaccredited for the school, and I've participated in a visit to another school regarding their reaccreditation process. Also, as a BPS parent and a BPS grad, Chair of the Committee on Education, accountability within our schools is incredibly important, and giving authority to the state chair, I think, is an important piece, but not at the expense of the voices of our school superintendent, of our school communities, our school leaders, and our school teachers. We are often held accountable based on measures that are not in, that are not, don't make sense when in comparison to other communities. Here in the city of Boston, we have higher rates of poverty, we have higher rates of trauma when we think about what our students have been exposed to, we certainly have high rates of homelessness. 5,000 of the 55,000 students in the Boston Public School System are experiencing homelessness. That's 10% of our student population. Just this year, due to my work on the city council, we finally have a full-time nurse in all of our school buildings. We do not have full-time mental health and behavioral health specialists in all of our buildings. We are not giving our kids the supports that they need every single day within our schools. That is critical before we start measuring our school communities against other school communities from much wealthier communities with a great deal of resources.
So should state commissioners be able to reject district plans, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. David, David Halbert?
No, I don't believe so. I think that, but I do think that we need to have changes in our oversight and our accountability. And that's why I've called for the change in our school committee, and pivoting that towards a hybrid school committee model, where we can preserve accountability for the mayor's office, we can add accountability and presence for the city council, and we can bring back elected members so that communities, parents, residents, neighborhoods have a direct voice in the education of our children. Look, our children are our single most precious resource, the thing that, you know, for me as a father, motivates me each and every day out on the campaign trail and all the work that I do. And so we have to make sure that we have that voice to look out for them.
Julia Mahia?
So I sit on the statewide Accountability and Assessment Task Force for the Department of Education. I'm actually the only parent in that space, and I think at this point, I'm the only person of color as well. I think that we have an opportunity to even redefine, how do we define what is high-performing? I think that the state needs to look at beyond the test score. If we're really going to hold schools accountable, then we also need to hold ourselves accountable in ensuring that schools have the resources and the tools that they need to be able to perform at the high level of expectation that the city and the state has.
The new Boston Public School Superintendent, Brenda Casellius, earlier this month, placed a moratorium on some standardized tests administered in the city's public schools. She also said she's open to changing the controversial admissions test for the exam schools. Do you think the Boston Public School System should move away from standardized testing? I'd like to start with Erin Murphy.
I do not. So I think it goes back to the foundation, and it's not all about test day. And if we expect our kids to show up on that one day and do well, then we're not supporting them. So are we making sure that all of our public schools are getting our children ready for exam schools, or are we fully funding our VOTEC so there are other options? That's a bigger issue. But I'm definitely not in favor of changing the test, because I don't think that's going to help really, is that the problem here?
We look at the Boston Public Schools, and the demographic is 73% black and Latino. At the exam schools, it is 40% black and Latino. At Boston Latin School, my alma mater, it is 20%. I think it is an example of great inequity in our schools. And so looking at the ISCE, that's one option. How do we change the test, or how do we measure it less so that it's not impacting those that are getting admitted? But this has been a rallying point of mine since the beginning, because the education played a transformational role in my life, and everyone should have access to equal opportunities in education.
And that is not the case right now in the city of Boston. Right now, what we see are students feeling as though they didn't get in. I think that we need to challenge that conversation and making sure that kids, no matter what school they end up in, that we're laying down the strong foundation from K through 8, and ensuring that all high schools, no matter what type of high school it is, is the highest performing. And I agree that we do need to change the way the entrance test looks at, and I think maybe we can look at it looking through the MCAS score, as opposed to this test that nobody can afford to take.
Anissa Asabi George, is it time to move away from standardized testing?
Well, I want to, you've asked two questions here, one about the ISCE, and one about a moratorium on standardized testing in our schools. Today, our kids spend about 29 days, not business days, days or business days, in the classroom taking tests. We have to move away from that. It's 180 days in a school year. We always know the day before summer break, the day before winter break, the day before spring break, those aren't super productive days. We need to make sure that our kids are having opportunities to learn, not just prepare for a test, whether it's the ISCE or one of these other standardized tests, including the MCAS. Now, I'm a believer in a test plus grades for admissions to the exam schools. Someone else said already on the panel that it really shouldn't, the conversation shouldn't be about the exam school and access to the exam schools, it should be about improving the quality of all of our high schools across the district. But let's look at the ISCE, because our curriculum does not align with that test, so something has to change. Either we look for a new test, I'm not a super fan of the MCAS, I've administered it, but we do have to look at either the test or the curriculum.
Boston moved to a mirror-planted school committee in 1992, but some groups, among them the NAACP's Boston branch, have called for a return to an elected school committee. Others argue that the old system was plagued by patronage. Should Boston go back to an elected school committee? I'll start with David Halbert.
Well, Phil, we're reducting a little bit here, but no, I don't believe that it should go back to a fully elected school committee, and the reason is this, I think that we want to make sure that we preserve that accountability. You know, adding it to the mayor's office was a good thing, but taking it completely and taking the voice completely away from our neighborhoods was an unintended consequence, and I think we've seen that really hollow out, and what parents feel in terms of their access and their agency in the education of their children. And that's why, to my earlier point, I've called for that balance. But the reason that the model that I've put forward, that hybrid model, is there, is because it's two members from underneath the umbrella of the mayor, two members from the city council, and three members that are representing elected districts, new elected school committee districts here in the city. And one of the reasons behind that is because you can do the math, no one starts off with a majority. And so that should get us going in the direction that we need to be in, which is responsible decision-making, responsible conversations and compromise, once again, to impact positively each and every one of the 54-plus-thousand students across BPS each and every day.
Thank you. I want to give the other candidates a chance to weigh in on this.
So I think that whether it be appointed, elected, what have you, I think what we have to do is look at how we are making the school committee more accountable to our students and our families. And then one of the things that we could do tomorrow is give the student representation on the school that currently exists on the school committee a vote.
I think too, I'm not sure if anyone in the room could even name all of our school committee members, how many there are, and as a school teacher for over 20 years and a mom in the city, it's often something that we're not engaged in. So we talk about, oh, the superintendent, I was at a meeting the other night, and she had said, "We need people to show up to our school committee meetings." But how do we get people to feel like their voices are heard? So I am in favor of an elected school committee, it would bring it back to the neighborhoods, and I feel that people's voices would be heard then.
Michael Flaherty, how do we increase the public's feeling of being invested in the public schools?
I think that's a big part. I'm on record of supporting a return to the elected. I trust the voters of Boston to make that decision, but what we hear from folks across the city, particularly the consumers, and those of the children that go to school, their parents and grandparents, is that they feel that there's a disconnect, they feel shut out. And I think by having a return of the elected school committee, you would see more consumers participate in that process.
All right, let's do one more lightning round question. Very quickly, what's the most recent book you've read, Anissa Asabi George?
Oh, that's a really good question. I think it's one I recently reread, which was Queen Noor, the former queen of Jordan, who is an American Arab woman.
Nope, that's all you get. Go ahead.
Couldn't even tell you the last time I had, I'm more on magazines and periodicals.
I don't have time to read books, but I do read the Boston Globe and the Boston Herald.
The Underground Railroad by Colson Whitehead.
Wow, I think the last time I read a book was in 2009, and it was The Alchemist.
So my son had to read this for school, and I reread To Kill a Mockingbird, that was my last book.
So I read to my two-year-old, Marlon Brando, but Just Mercy, is one I read for myself.
Our bedtime favorite, one of our bedtime favorites is The Lorax, and then for myself, Capital City by Samuel Stein.
All right, it's time now for the candidates' closing statements. Again, we're going to go in an order that was determined by random draw earlier, and Julia Mahia will go first.
Yeah, I was getting warmed up, and we're almost done, okay. So I'd just like to say thank you so much for listening in. I am a community organizer. As you can see, I am very feisty and sassy, and I believe that's what's missing inside city government. I'm a fighter, I'm always here for the right reasons, and I'm trying to ensure that those who are most impacted have a seat at the table, and that we're building the type of infrastructure that recognizes that for far too long, we have been shut out of every conversation. And so my hope is to join the rest of my colleagues to cause some disruption.
Okay, Michael Flaherty.
I'd like to thank the organizers and the moderators for having us today. It's an honor and privilege to serve as one of your four at-large councillors, and would love an opportunity to go back to work for you to address the concerns that we've been talking about during the course of this debate. I have been endorsed by the Globe, I'm number one on the ballot, and ask that you go to my website, michaelflaherty.com, for any additional thoughts and comments or questions on my record.
Althea Garrison.
Once again, my name is Althea Garrison, and I've been in office for 10 months. I'm asking to give me two years of full term. I will do the best that I can do in this city council. I've done quite a bit in 10 months. Think what I could do in two years.
David Halbert.
Thank you so much, everyone, for tuning in, for being here today, and thank you to our moderators for doing a wonderful job. My name's David Halbert, I'm asking for one of your votes on November 5th, because I want to bring the experiences that I've had and the benefits that I've had, and put those in the service in a different way, in a different platform, helping and coming up with creative solutions to address the issues that are facing our city, and putting us towards a better and brighter future. I hope that you'll go to my website, www.davidhalbert.com, to learn a little bit more. And I hope you understand that one of the other reasons that we have a better city council now than we did when I was a staffer is because of representation, and that matters.
Michelle Wu.
Thank you, everyone. The city council is a platform for the bold, urgent change that Boston needs on so many of the issues we talked about today, climate change, and traffic, and mobility, and housing affordability, and equity. I've seen the council change tremendously just in my six years. When I joined, I doubled the number of women, from Ayana to Ayana and me, and now we're at a very different place where the council is taking on the big issues. So that happens with a responsive representative city council. We need your partnership, so above anything else, remember to vote November 5th.
Thank you for the opportunity. Although I'm a new candidate, I have served both inside and outside of government, I'm uniquely positioned to start running, to hit the ground running on day one. Along with my 20 years of service, I also bring with me the intersectionality of all my identities, as a gay woman, as a Latina, as a homicide survivor, and as a new mom. I am prepared to lead with compassion and govern through a lens of equity. Together, we can build a better Boston for all.
Anissa Asabi George.
Thank you, Tiziana and Adrian, for moderating this afternoon's session, and I'm just very proud to serve as one of your four at-large city councillors. As a mom, as a small business owner, as a former teacher, I work every day to represent all residents of the city of Boston, especially those most vulnerable. As Chair of the Committee on Education, I apply my work every single day, my former work to that job. As Chair of the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery, I'm especially focused on families experiencing homelessness, access to mental health care, and the addiction crisis. I hope to earn your vote on Tuesday, November 5th. I'm number eight on the ballot.
Erin Murphy.
Hi, so thank you all for coming tonight, thank you for having us here. I definitely feel that I am the best candidate for a city council because my life experience is living here in the city and raising my children, and I can connect to people, I'm working hard day and night, and to be, the city council is a full-time job, and the work ethic that you show along the campaign trail, I think, is a direct reflection of how hard you're going to work on the council. So I know that I'll work hard for the neighborhoods and be a voice for those who often feel that we're not listening, and engaging people to be more involved in our city government.
Let's invite our audience to congratulate the participants in the debate. That's all the time we have today for today's special live debate. Stick with WBUR and the Boston Globe for coverage of what happens in the Boston City Council election on November 5th. Thanks to our guests today, the eight candidates running for the four at-large seats. I wanted to give a special thanks to our partners at the Boston Globe and to the Boston Globe columnist, Adrian Walker, for co-hosting the debate today.
Thank you, Tiziana. We also want to thank our other co-sponsors, the McCormick Graduate School of Policy and Global Studies at UMass Boston, and thanks to our audience, on air, online, and here at WBUR City Space. And thanks to our audience, on air, online, and here at WBUR City Space.
A special shout-out to the engineering and facilities team and the production team here at WBUR City Space for providing us the content, the space, the lights, and this fabulous sound. And to you listeners here at home, don't forget to vote on November fifth. Stay tuned to the Boston Globe, to WBUR, and to Radio Boston for future election coverage and for reporting on all the issues that matter to you as voters. I am Tiziana Deering, this has been a special debate coverage on Radio Boston.